And start tonight's meeting. Tonight, we have the June 2014 meeting. Mr. Minkalinka is out tonight, so I'll be subbing for him. So we'll go ahead, call to order this meeting. And first, I'm gonna just follow this here. First item on the agenda is approval of April's meeting minutes. If y'all need a second, or if anybody's reviewed them and so forth, somebody wanna make a motion?
I've reviewed them, and I don't see any errors.
A second?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Wayne, and a second by Mr. Spears to approve April's meeting minutes. All right. Oh, I guess we need to vote, everybody?
Aye.
Aye? Approved, okay. Aye.
I got you.
Next on the agenda is citizens' communication. And we'll recognize any citizen wishing to address the commission on issues not specifically listed on the agenda. If anybody wants to come up to the podium here, state your name and address, and... Okay, so no citizen communication. So Dan will go ahead and start, item D1.
Good evening, planning commissioners. The first item tonight, D1 and D2, I'm gonna present together. It's a request to, for a plat extension for Miore Place East and West. These plats, along with the preliminary for this project, were approved back in January of 2013. The project includes 31 townhouse lots. The applicant is kinda delaying or putting off the start of this particular part of the project because of, he's still kinda gauging the housing demand. I do wanna mention that he has started several houses that are on the fleet that would be just to the east of these plats. Here's a look at the preliminary showing both the east and west. They front along Miore Lane and would have two access points. Here's a look at the final plat for the west. And this is the final plat for the east side. Staff has evaluated the request and is recommending that we do extend those plats. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant, or the engineer for this project is also here, if you have any questions.
I have a question. The way, I know I brought this up, or I know we had an issue like this in April, but if it says one year, is it still a valid plat after a year?
Well, with your action, it will be. This is kind of a continuation from last, our last meeting of trying to clean up some of these plat records where staff hasn't done a very good job of keeping track of those and finding out whether the applicant wishes to extend them.
But is that your responsibility, or is it the applicant's?
Technically, no, it would be the applicant's. In this case, you know, none of our regulations was changed. If you chose not to approve the extension, the result is they, you know, have to go through the process of turning it back in and paying the fee and coming back to planning commission, so...
Well, I guess my question is, and in the scheme of things, it doesn't really, it's not significant, but the year was put there for a reason. So my thought is, you know, if they don't meet the year, then it's no longer a valid request.
Well, I understand that thought process.
And let me just say that I'm not, I'm not being a hard bud or anything like that, but I know in situations I've dealt with in my, in my work, there are hard deadlines, and if you meet them, there are significant penalties.
Well, there's nothing, there's also, the other side of the coin is this, there's nothing in our city code that says you can't grant an extension after the one-year time has expired. So there's another way of looking at it from that perspective. Like I said before, in this, in this particular case, if they, if we chose not to do it and they wanted to continue to do it, you would come back and approve the exact same thing because it, there's, none of the regulations have changed, nothing's changed.
But the year was put in there, I guess, to capture any changes that may occur?
It was, and if you go back, not that long ago, there, back when we were dealing with kind of a lower, a slower time in our economy, there were plats, not necessarily like this, but where we, every year, we were doing an extension on the same plat, where we, where planning commission was renewing, or extending a plat for four and five years.
I can see the extension as long as it was with file within the one-year timeframe.
Right. And we've been, we've historically been a little lax with that. This is, you know, a little, a little longer than we would prefer, and we've got a tickler in our files now where we're trying to keep track of those so that we can keep our files clean and fresh, and if the applicant doesn't wanna extend it, then we close the file and move on, so... But I, you know, from my opinion, I don't see any harm in extending this one, as we did at our last meeting in April.
John, maybe to address that with you is, maybe we need to just look at a cap on extensions. You're allowed one extension or two extensions, and after that, that's it. Maybe a part of city code be a cap on extensions.
Is there a fee to file for an extension?
There's not.
Because that could be another possibility to encourage people to, to do that, and I know the city's always looking for a source of funds.
That is something we can look at.
Is there any real work involved by your department when somebody files a request for an extension, other than pulling it up and sticking it on the agenda and...
That's, that's the extent, that's all we did, was create the staff report.
There's no research to make sure, no codes have changed to make sure it still meets code?
Well, we look at those things, but in this case, nothing's changed. Did I answer that question?
Well, I mean, you said, nothing else happens, we just refile it, but I mean, before an extension is filed, before we even approve the final plat, it has to make sure it meets current codes in case codes changed.
Right.
So there has to be a checks and balances somewhere in that system to make sure that we don't just do, like you were saying, five years' worth of extensions, and meanwhile, during that five years, we've changed code and it now no longer meets code. Then you're looking at a variance situation that I really don't think we wanna get into.
Well, if you, if codes changed and you continue to grant an extension, they'd basically be grandfathered from a code change. In this case, or you could choose not to grant them the extension. In this case, the codes have not changed since January 2013, so...
But...
And to get to Ms. Patillo's question, if they had to refile, they'd have to pay another fee, is it significant?
Um, what, $500?
About that, $500.
So if we, if we applied a fee for an extension, it wouldn't be anything like that. I don't know what it would be, 50 bucks or something like that, maybe?
I just don't think indefinite extensions are a good way to, to do business. Maybe allow for one extension, two extensions, but not an indefinite number. Like you were saying, you know, in slower days, we had four, five years' worth. After a while, there has to be some sort of, some sort of draw the line in the sand and say, okay, well, you allowed two extensions, and that's it. After that, you're gonna have to refile the plat and what have you, you're gonna have to extend and incur the cost.
Would it, would it be a lot of work to draw up something that would, if they go past the 12 months, charge like a $200 fee?
That's, that's another thing we could look at. If we're gonna, if we're gonna go back and create a fee, which I'll be, we'll be working on those this summer, that's something we can look at if they miss the deadline of perhaps adding some sort of...
That way, it's not, it's not gonna be so much, it's gonna be punitive, but it's, you know, anytime you pull a couple hundred dollars out of your pocket, it's, it'll improve your memory.
Yes, sir.
I like that idea.
I like that thought process. I don't, I don't, I like Bruce, but I don't like his idea of capping it. I think the way you cap it, not necessarily cap it, but maybe provide a $200, $250 fee every time that they, they wish to extend it. Maybe you provide them one, one free extension, and then after that...
I guess my concern is on that, Omar, is, like Jared was saying, if you've got somebody that files for an extension, another extension a year later, another extension a year later, well, that plat's still approved. And if it no longer meets code because we've had code changes, well, now it's grand, it's a grandfathered plat that no longer meets code, and you're actually approving something that doesn't meet code at that point.
Couldn't we deny it and make them reapply?
You could, you could deny it, and I think, I don't know that we've had very many situations where we've done extensions and something's changed. Certainly what we can do in our staff reports is, if we're bringing an extension request to you, we can highlight in the staff report that, you know, some, what may have changed, or, you know, what the impacts would be if you chose not to extend it.
That if you bring an extension request, that the plat still meets code at that time for the extension.
I think we can rely on, on the staff to make us aware, and make future commissions aware if there's been a change in any code, and then the commission at that time can, can make a decision. I'm just, would like to see a little bit more clearly defined in the, in the code that there's a fee, because even though it seems like it's just a little bit of work here and there, it is work. I mean, we are, you are using man-hours to, to do this without any type of an extension fee associated with it, and it would be a good way to, I don't wanna be punitive because I don't wanna stop folks from going out there and trying to build residential properties and do business, but I also don't like it when they take advantage of the system just because there's a loophole there, and, you know, like Bruce said, there's nothing to stop them from getting a plat and just requesting an extension every year until they decide that they're gonna do something with it. However, I can see where it may be advantageous, or it just may be the reality of business. For example, if people start buying up Miore Place East, but nobody wants to buy any lots of Miore Place West, developer's not gonna build properties on Miore Place West until somebody wants to build. He shouldn't have to replat the whole thing and go through the whole process. So I, I'm comfortable with trusting that staff's gonna bring the information to future commissions on anything that might happen like this in the future, and I'd be with Mr. Wayne, and I'd like to make a recommendation, however we do that through to council, that maybe we need to take a look in the next code of putting something in there so there's a little bit of teeth to extensions, and maybe clearly defining that extensions may not be granted if there's been a change in the code, so that people are aware of that and that there's a refiling fee, just to help offset some of the costs that we go through.
The research cost.
Looking, that's something we can look at, and definitely on the fees, we'll be working on those this summer anyway, so that's something we'll look at.
So we can, we can proceed without a motion and vote and so on and so forth, too, that y'all will come up with something for us to look at?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
We still need to make a decision if we're gonna approve the request for...
You still need to make a decision on tonight, it's on your agenda.
On this request. This will be for future requests.
Anybody have any more questions of Dan? Okay. Somebody, what's the...
Will we accept the, or we grant the extension?
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Caldwell, Caldwell, and a second by Mr. Woods to approve the extension. I guess we vote? All in, oh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I say nay.
Do we need to do those separately, as two votes, because it's two separate items?
He presented them both, he, he was addressing them both in the beginning.
Let me just ask, would your vote be the same?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no. He missed the 12-month deadline.
We'll record it as a separate.
Okay. The, the next item is the Tuscany subdivision, section 1B, phase 1. This is a final plat. The property's located on the south side of Ball Airport Road and just west and north side. This will be the, kind of the first phase that's gonna be crossing onto the south side of Ball Airport Road for the Tuscany project. The site is approximately 8.6 acres. The property is owned by Ball Airport Road Development Company. Their president is Ben Gonzalez. The applicant is proposing to plat the property into four single-family lots detached, and then there'll be 32 paddy home lots, and then there'll be a private lot, a larger one that will contain the detention facility. In total, there'll be, there'll be 37 lots, and the residential side will range in size from about 4,200 to about 6,300 square feet in size. Here's a look at the, the final plat. The project will tie into Ball Airport Road to the, to the north on the screen here. The, the large detention facility is at the bottom of the page. All the project will drain, drain south into that, then out to, to Northside Road. Here's a look at the, the subject property. You can see the recently constructed Ball Airport Road that was done by the Tuscany developer. The cities actually will be developing or improving the other westerly portion out to Glasgow of Ball Airport Road here within the next year, so you'll have a connection from Glasgow to, to Northside Road. Here's another look, looking south at the subject property. As far as infrastructure goes, everything is gonna come off Ball Airport Road. You'll have a 12-inch line that exists today for water. There's a main, a 15-inch main for wastewater that will run throughout this phase of the project, and then, like I said, the drainage will, will go to that detention facility Transportation access points, the project will contain three local streets, all with a 60-foot right-of-way, and if you'll remember, this, this project had a variance approved that covered the entire Tuscany project for a 30-foot pavement section. So it'll still be a 60-foot right-of-way, but the actual paved surface will be 30 feet. Again, the 36 residential units, we're anticipating approximately about 360 trips per day that would come out of this site. We've reviewed the plat, and we find that it meets all the requirements of chapter 2021 of city code, and recommend that, that planning commission approve. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we also have the applicant's engineer here as well.
Dan, I just have one question. Was this the one where it was an asphalt drive or a concrete drive? Remember the one you, we've...
It was all concrete?
Concrete, okay.
Yeah, I believe the whole project is concrete.
Anybody have any questions of Dan? No?
I do. It's more, I guess, a clarification for me, still being kind of the rookie. But they're asking, they're, they're talking about naming three different streets, but there's only two streets that I can see. Like, Vilagio Circle is located on the plat in two different spots, at the top of the plat and at the bottom of the plat, running horizontal to the page, and then you've got Pienza and Luca running north and south to the page, but it seems like Vilagio Circle would be a circle going all the way around.
That will be connected in the future phases. There'll be a section that will be kind of to the east that will be between this plat and Northside Road, and then there'll be another section to the, to the west.
That clarifies it. See, I knew you could answer it.
Why they started the middle, I mean, they had a kind of a stubout already, and Brandy with Civil Corps maybe answered that, but they had a little stubout there already, so that, I'm assuming that's why they started with this middle phase.
And if they meet all the requirements, we pretty much, this is just a matter of we have to just vote yes, because they meet all the requirements. Am I correct in that? Then I move, we accept the plat?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Caldwell, and a second by Mr. Woods to approve the All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
The, the next item is another final plat for Country Lane Townhomes for the first phase. The project is located south of Salem and kind of west of Zach Lence. The, the first phase, I've highlighted here in yellow, the second phase is the red kind of polygon that's just kind of north of there. The total size of the site is 9.65 acres. They, this property will have direct access out to Zach Lence Parkway. The owner of the property is a Country Lane Holdings LLC, and the applicant has indicated that they'll be developing multifamily on this tract. Again, it will be in two phases, but, but this first one will contain just under, they believe, 90 units. So the, the first phase will contain a multifamily, just one lot for, for the multi-residential purposes. Here's a look at the, the plat. Here's an aerial photo of the site adjacent to, you have single-family detached to the, to the south, and then an apartment complex is just to the, kind of the west and south. As far as utilities go, actually, let me point out one thing here, the utilities, there is a kind of a larger easement that goes between two of these homes up here, kind of right in this area here. So they will be tying in into that existing subdivision for both water and wastewater. There's gonna be an extension, though, of the 8-inch water line that exists in Country Lane. They're actually gonna pull it east or south through their project and tie it back into the subdivision, which is gonna loop the system and really improve, hopefully, water quality maybe and pressure in that area. The Sanitar Sewer will also go through that same easement and tie into the residential subdivision there to the south. Drainage will, will be looked at a little bit closer as they come in with their, their site plan. Drainage, however, does go through that same easement as well. It's about a 30-foot wide easement that's between those two houses that will accommodate all three of those utilities. As far as access and transportation from the site, again, the lot one will only have access out to Zach Lence. The future phase two, though, will require that the Country Lane be extended, and that will be, serve as kind of a secondary access point for the full development of the site. Lot two will also have access through a dedicated easement to get out to Zach Lence as well, so the, lot two essentially is not landlocked, it will be able to go out Country Lane and Zach Lence as the project develops. There will be no public streets constructed during this phase of the project. Again, we've reviewed the plat and find that it meets the requirements of chapter 21 for multifamily residential use, and recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions, and we also have the, the engineer here as well.
I do. What determines whether you get water and sewer off of Meadow Creek or off of Salem Road?
That's, it's typically worked out between the design engineer and our city engineer as to what is the best, the best way to have service to a lot.
Okay.
They work pretty closely together to, to find, you know, find what's the best, you know, for that area. They're gonna loop the system, too, which is, is a plus in this case.
Dan, the construction plans, are they approved? It says pending final approval in, in the, in the package.
Yeah, I did not check the...
It's just for the water and sewer, just a lot, it's just no public street.
Dan, can you go over again on the large lot one that's gonna be the multifamily? How's ingress and egress gonna be handled on that one, again?
The, the first phase, this, this was discussed quite a bit when we did the preliminary plat for this site. The, the first phase will, will only have about, I think they said 85 to about 90 units, so they'll only need one access point, and Zach Lence will, will be sufficient. Now, when they get to phase two, we believe the number of units will be at a, such a number that it will require a secondary access, and that's why they'll be extending Country Lane to the edge of this property.
And so they're, they're proposing having a road along where they're gonna be potentially developing single-family homes out to Zach Lence, or is that...
Yeah, the drive, the drive will come down here.
Off of that, that's our...
And we're not concerned about having two apartment complexes at the end of that, or they're gonna have to put another access on the other side?
Well, they'll, they will have...
Phase two will have...
Phase two will be required to, to come down country, or provide an access. They'll probably, you know, obviously, some of the trips will go Country Lane, some will go out to Zach Lence, but I can throw the...
Pass the part.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any more questions of, of Dan? Ray? All right, then. Somebody, any comments by the commissioners? All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the plat, present.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rashid, and a second by Mr. Wayne to approve the final plant, plat, excuse me, for Country Lane Townhomes. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
My name's Jaren Hogenson. I'm the new staff planner. The next item on the agenda is a final plat and variance request for the Raquel Rodriguez The property is .23 acres, located at 2802 and 2804 Algie Street. It's owned by Raquel Rodriguez, and they're proposing to subdivide the property into two single-family residential lots. The lots are proposed to be 5,011 square feet each. You can see the lot here, and an aerial photo of the property. City code section 2182A1 requires residential lots to be 6,000 square feet. These properties will be 5,011 if granted the variance. Approval would allow the variance to, approval of the proposed variance would allow the property owner to create these residences. Final plat proposes the two single-family residential lots. It's currently undeveloped, and due to the size of the overall property, it would not be possible to acquire 6,000-square-foot lots without purchasing more than. A majority of the lots located along Algie are less than 6,000, so most of these houses do not conform under the current codes. In favor, it would not create a negative effect on the surrounding property. There are very many, there are similarly sized properties in the area, and the literal enforcement of the code would require more land be acquired. Against the variance is that it would create a non-conforming lot, and there are other alternatives, such as replating, to allow a single lot. Staff is recommending approval of this variance request. If you have any questions?
I'm confused. In the packet, it makes it appear as if Ms. Rodriguez bought two separate properties. Why are we talking about issuing a variance on two properties that she bought separately that I'm assuming were already two separate lots?
They are two separate lots, but in order to build something on them, they have to be platted. In order to plat, she now needs a variance because these lots were in their original, in their original configuration, which is what these are, they were less than the 6,000 square foot requirement. Most of this area was developed in the 60s and 70s before it was in the city limits. You can go up the next street, it's platted, this one's not. It's just kind of, it was hit and miss of following the regulations back then, but...
Okay, so this is just correcting something that wasn't done properly when the lots were first created back in the day?
Right, or, or it may not even been in the city limits when the lots were created.
Okay.
So, because this was Enix in, sometime in the 70s, I believe.
That clarifies that, because I was reading through it, and it was like, okay, she bought two lots, she could build on them, but I understand now, they weren't platted to begin with.
Does anybody have any more comments of Mr. Hogenson? How's it, is that correct?
Hogenson.
Hogenson, excuse me.
I have a question. What's gonna happen to the leftover foundation from the previous structure?
I guess it's up to her.
Okay, it looks like, it sounds like they're gonna plant, they're planning to put maybe two manufactured housing units on it, so depending on what they're doing, they may be able to leave that slab, work around it.
We don't know.
We don't know for sure.
Okay.
Any further comments from any, any of the commissioners? Okay. Any citizens' communication? None?
Here are some photos of the lot, if you would wish to see these. The pole there separates the two lots.
Do I have a motion? Oh, wait, 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 we have to read this a certain way, right? Yes.
She said her...
She's ever motioned on the variance.
Okay.
To do, make a recommendation on variance, and then a recommendation on the plat.
Okay, so...
The plat is the one that has the final length on there.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the variance request?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rashid and a second by Ms. Dean to approve the variance request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the variance request passes. Now, to approve the final plat, we need someone to read that language.
I'll read it. That the final plat for Raquel Rodriguez subdivision be disapproved subject to approval of the submitted variance request by the city council and the reoffer of any dedications upon approval of said variance. If the variance is approved by the city council, the plat will be considered approved by the planning commission, and I so move.
One second.
So we have a, we have a motion by Ms. Patia and a second by Mr. Caldwell to, I'm not going to reiterate all that, but to approve the final plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. And Ms. Wayne, this is yours? Is this your, you're going to...
Wait till you're going to step out for a few minutes?
Right, Dan?
I haven't gotten to the page yet.
Okay.
Yes, I'm involved in the agenda item D6, so I said I'd be...
We'll come grab you when we're finished with this.
Senator Flair.
Yes, sir.
Just don't go outside, the door may be locked.
Yeah, don't walk outside, you might not get back in.
All right, the next item is Frail subdivision number one, resubdivision number one. The subject property is located on Sam Houston, just north of the intersection with Miore. It actually has a portion of the lot that does front on Miore as well. The request tonight is for a final plat that also involves a variance. The site is 2.12 acres. The building, and it is a developed tract, has two commercial buildings. One is an old movie theater, the other is a shop facility. The movie theater has an address of 1205 Sam Houston, and the shop facility is 2612 Miore Lane. The property is owned by James Wayne. They're proposing to subdivide this one lot into two. The plan is to sell off the movie theater site, and Mr. Wayne would retain the shop that fronts on Miore. The movie theater lot would be 1.713 acres, and the shop lot on Miore would be .408. Their variance request tonight is to reduce the right-of-way dedication on Sam Houston from five feet to zero feet along Sam Houston Drive. Here's a look at the subject property. Lot 1 being obviously with the frontage on Sam Houston, and Lot 2 are the Miore Lane lot. The right-of-way dedication requirement that they're asking for the variance is up here along Sam Houston, a five-foot strip along this area. Here's an air photo of the subject property. You can see the red line is approximately where that property line would be placed to separate the two facilities. You can also see Sam Houston, that road was recently constructed by the city. Majority of that right-of-way was only 85-foot, 80 to 85-foot in some sections, and they were able to make all the improvements basically within that section. There was a lot of dedication for some of these older subdivisions that only gave 80 or 85 feet in some cases. So to acquire all the extra five feet from all those different property owners, it would have been, would have been a pretty massive undertaking. You probably would have ended up with a lot of high cost, and probably even some buildings in a lot of cases probably would have been within that five feet. So they were able to fit everything within that 85-foot cross-section. So the road is basically improved to its full extent. We had a similar variance just south of this area that was asking for the same thing. That one, that one was also, that one was approved by council back last year. Utilities for the site, both, obviously, buildings are served right now. We have a 10-inch water line on Sam Houston, and then a 6-inch line on Miore that serves each of the buildings. And again, sewer is a 12-inch line on Sam Houston, and then an 8-inch line on Miore. Drainage, as obviously exists and meets the master drainage plan for the city. The actual code section that the request is for is 2154B2, which requires 90 feet for a secondary arterial. Obviously, moving forward with this would allow the developer to move, to kind of plat the property as is without that dedication. Already mentioned, a large part of that roadway is already 85 feet. And kind of looking a little bit closer at the property, you know, the site is 230 feet in depth. You know, the additional five feet probably doesn't have a whole lot of impact on the building as it sits today, but any future maybe outbuildings that could be constructed along Sam Houston would obviously be impacted and, you know, have to be placed back a little bit. The, we also have an issue with a sign that could potentially be within the public right-of-way if that five foot was dedicated. I have a pretty good picture of that, so you'll be able to see that. But they have a large sign that I think everyone is probably familiar with that most likely would be in the right-of-way if we took the five feet, so... We don't feel that it would be a negative impact on the surrounding property owners. Like I said, the road has been constructed to its full extent. And again, that variance that was approved, it was actually October 2012 for Sam Houston Industrial Park, which is a little bit further to the south, closer to Houston Highway. Here's a picture of the site looking north on Sam Houston, where you can see the movie theater and also that large sign. The property line is most likely, probably falls right on that curb, I would guess. One or two feet probably on the, one or the, one side or the other, but the property line probably follows that curb very closely. Here's looking across Sam Houston at the movie theater building. And here's a look from Miore Lane looking at the shop facility. These are some of the things you can consider either in favor or if you found against the variance. We don't believe that it would impact the properties negatively in this area. Sam Houston has been reconstructed to its full extent for a large portion of that corridor within the 85 feet already. You know, if we were going to do it, you know, right-of-way would have been acquired back when they were planning for that project. And then the, you know, the little enforcement of requiring the 90 feet would graciously reduce the front yard for this, for this lot, and then would also place that sign in the public right-of-way. If you found against, obviously, this would create a non-conforming street section for this, in front of this property. And the reduction of the dedication could be avoided by, actually, you could, you could mess with actually the front yard building line if you really, you know, you could reduce that down as well. But staff has evaluated the project and is recommending approval of both the variance and the plat. Be happy to answer any questions, and we also have the design engineer here as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. In the future, given up that five feet, what potentially could be things that that creates a problem for down the road? I mean, I understand that we didn't get the 85 feet all the way along Sam Houston at all the properties, because at the time, we didn't, we felt we didn't need it, but we didn't not say that we were never going to take it or try to get it. If we put a variance in place, that sticks with this property. So what could that affect in the future?
I mean, at some point, if, you know, maybe this road turns into some major, major facility that they needed 100 feet or something, I, you'd have to then purchase, that'd be, God, I don't know how many properties would be along Sam Houston, but you would be dealing, you'd have to acquire 10, 15 feet from everybody, and you'd probably be dealing with signs, buildings. The cost would be probably prohibitive, really, to do the project.
So utilities were okay with the way it is existing? There's enough curb area that if we, if for some reason in the future decide that every road has to have a bike lane or anything like that, we've got enough space for that?
I don't know about bike lanes unless there's a shared bike lane, which basically kind of exists everywhere anyway.
I'm just trying to think of all the things that could come up that if we put a variance in place...
By putting the variance in place, if we ever need that right-of-way, the city will have to buy it, as they will up and down the entire corridor.
If you were to ever take Sam Houston to six lanes, say...
Right.
But that's going to involve a lot more than this just property.
Well, we probably won't be here when that happens, not with Zach Lance in place. Okay, thank you. I'm just wondering what we're giving up if we don't...
Any other questions of Dan? No? Any citizens' communication? No? All right, then. So, once again, this is one of these, we need to, two votes approve the variance request, and then the second vote would be for the final plat. So do I have a motion to approve the variance request?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Spears and a second by Mr. Rashid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So the variance request passed. Second item, we're voting on the final plat, and anybody want to offer reading this?
I'll do it. That the final plat for Frail subdivision number one, resubdivision number one be disapproved subject to the approval of the submitted variance request by the city council and the reoffer of any dedications upon approval of said variance. If the variance is approved by the city council, the plat will be considered approved by the planning commission.
Do I have a second? I'm going to assume Ms. Dean's is a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Dean and a second by Mr. Spears for the reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the, it's passed. Motion passed.
It'd be good to see something in that building.
All right. Give Mr. Wayne a second here. Go ahead, Dan.
The next item is a driveway variance request for 4702 Begonia Lane. The subject property is highlighted here in blue. It's just northwest of the intersection of Laurent and Mockingbird in the Primrose subdivision. It's a corner property, fronts on Begonia, but it also has access to Juniper Street. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a second driveway that would have access or provide, provide entry to a garage structure in the rear yard of his property. The section of code is 20-82A1, which limits residential driveways to one for each local street frontage. So in this case, he wouldn't be allowed to have one on Juniper and Begonia, but because he's requesting to have both of them front on Juniper, he needs the variance. The subject property is a 10,800 square feet, square-foot lot. It's currently developed with a single-family home. Again, it's a corner lot with Begonia and Juniper. The driveway is currently in place on Juniper, which provides access to the residential, it's actually a garage that, after us looking at pictures, it's more of a carport. And obviously, there is, at this point, there is no driveway off of Begonia. The proposed variance would allow the second driveway to be placed on Juniper, and the location is about 50 feet away from the existing. Here's another look at the subject property. Just wanted to point out the applicant's, and his exhibits and his letter. We do have two properties in this, kind of in the immediate area, that do have two driveways, and were either constructed before 1999 or were done so without a city permit. Get this to work. This property here does have a driveway that enters here, and then they also have a similar situation with a rear building that has a little driveway right here. The other property in this neighborhood is this one here that has a drive access here, and then also a smaller one right there. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant. You can see the house with the existing drive. The proposed location there in red, it actually does not line up exactly with the front of that rear building. It kind of goes off to the side a little bit. And again, it's about 50 feet from the existing and just under 20 feet from his property line. And he has, that side of frontage on Juniper is about 120 feet total. He also illustrates the location, that's kind of across from him, that has the two driveways in place already. Here's a couple pictures of the location. Obviously, right now, it's currently, you know, being accessed by a vehicle. It's a rollover curb, too, which obviously makes that much easier to kind of get up and over into property. You can see the rear outbuilding and then the main house kind of to the left of the picture. Here's a little further back, looking from Juniper, across Juniper at the subject house. Here's another picture, the, looking at the existing driveway with the carport facility. Couple reasons for, as far as finding, maybe in favor or against this variance. You know, in favor, you can find that it's not creating a negative impact to his surrounding property owners. And this, this next one is kind of how you look at it. I know we've had this discussion before, but, you know, on-street parking will be reduced for this residence. You know, we'll obviously, he'll now be able to put some vehicles on the property versus maybe in the street. There are currently other properties within pretty close proximity that already have this situation. Again, these were most likely put in before 1999, before the ordinance changed about driveways, and then obviously, there's always a potential that something could have been built without a permit. To find against this variance, this would create a non-conforming driveway. Obviously, staff has consistently applied this section of code since it's been adopted. And to deny, you know, we've always found to deny the placement of these second driveways when, you know, when they're on the same, same property frontage. And again, this is kind of how you, how you look at that. But the second driveway would obviously, would also reduce street parking by now. You know, this probably doesn't impact the subject property, but may impact the neighbors who now have lost, you know, a space or two, because there is now, you know, a driveway access point on the, next to them. Staff has evaluated, you know, the project and proposal and find, recommend that the variance be denied. Again, the applicant is here, and again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or the applicant is also here.
Can you go back to the pictures where the building, the outbuilding shown? Is there a fence in front of it?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah, the, the plan is not to line it up exactly, or his proposal is not to line it up exactly with that door, but to, you know, appears that there's some type of even a concrete slab that may have been put in adjacent to the, kind of between the house and the building.
So the driveway will be right there in the opening?
Yes, that's where it's proposed on the exhibit. Yeah, that, I'm sorry, the brown square is approximately where that...
Do we know how long that building's been there?
No. The applicant, any idea, the out, the rear yard building, any idea how long that's been there?
The what's that?
The backyard accessory building?
Well, that building's been there for about, since 80, 85, I think.
Eighty-five.
1985. Nineteen eighty-five.
I've got a question for you. As I remember from reading this last night, they are currently jumping the curb and, I perceive that as illegal, that we're, we as citizens of Victoria are not supposed to jump curbs. What I'm wondering is, does the police department enforce that?
I, I know it's being enforced if, if we have an issue of, if the curbs are being damaged. That's something we've heard about and have, and have to go. We actually had a commercial site that was doing that. We had to go out and talk with them. But if there's damage and, you know, we can, we can, you know, we can file a claim against the, the property owner that's doing that. You know, in a situation like this, there's obviously, there's no damage because it's the rollover design of that curb. But actively being enforced, I, I couldn't answer that if the police are doing that. I, there's no, there's no code that says you cannot park your vehicle on grass, or, yeah, on grass or paved surface on your residential property. So it's, I guess it's really proving it, you know, you know, someone could access their driveway and park on grass, but did they really go through the driveway or did they kind of come over the, the curb? So I, I see proving it is, is an issue, but, but actively enforcement, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
So it'd have to be a policeman seeing him driving across the curb.
Short of that, yeah, I.
Dan, I have a question. Would this, would this meet the, the ordinance change? I think he said a hundred and twenty feet on that one side. So my question is, would it meet the ordinance change once we vote on that?
The ordinance change proposed tonight.
A hundred and twenty-five feet, so it'll be five feet short.
Five feet short. I also don't know what the separation is. We're proposing.
I think, I think it was within, what'd you say, fifty feet or forty feet the ordinance says, or the ordinance revision?
The revision would call for a minimum space in a forty feet between the, the radius of the driveways.
I think this is forty feet, is, well, it's fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
So it may, it, it, short of the five feet, it's, it appears to meet the, the soon-to-be revised ordinance.
Well, the other thing is.
Except for the five feet.
Well, we would measure that lot measurement. Then maybe something we'll talk about on here.
Okay.
At what, it's considered the front of the lot. This is, this is not the front. The front of the lot is on Begonia and I, I believe this lot is, I don't know, something like ninety feet wide, or eighty feet wide. I don't recall the, but that's where that measurement is taken from, is at the front, not on the, not on the exterior side. This is the exterior side. The side street. So it's address off Begonia. That's where that hundred and twenty-five foot measurement would be taken. You know, most lots in Victoria, certainly in the, in subdivisions that have been plotted in the last twenty years, almost all of them have hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-five, five feet of lot depth. You know, on the, if you measured it from the front yard to the backyard, so.
Is there enough room between, and I don't know what, how much room you would need, but if you wanted to put a drive off Begonia and go along the other side of the house back to the shed, is there enough room to do that?
I doubt it. I would, I would assume that property, that house is probably five feet off of that side.
Basically, just trying, it looks like I'm trying to just simplify it, to put a driveway to park in the backyard. It's not like we're going to a garage.
For a business?
With roll-up doors. That's what I'm saying. Why, why are we wanting to park in the backyard? Is there a reason? There's a?
Solis, I, I don't know if it's time. Do, do you want to address the commission in any way?
I think Randy just, I think said everything that, you know, that I would have said. But I'll answer any question you, you want me to, to give you, any answer.
We have a question.
Sure.
The building's been there for twenty years. What, 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 what kind of use?
Are you talking about the building in, in back of the house? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, the one behind the fence.
It's just a shed. It's, it's just furniture and lumber and just things that you don't, you know, you, that you want to keep, you just throw in there and just put in there.
The driveway is not designed to give you, I guess, access to the.
No, 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 it's not. It's not, it's not, it's not supposed to be a garage. That, that building is not a garage or anything like that. It's just a shed. And eventually, I would like to maybe put a, a carport or a patio to the, uh, other end of the, of the driveway. If I can get a permit for that.
My question would be is, could it be still, that building still be served with parking on the street and a sidewalk to your shed?
Oh, is that again?
Could access to your building still be utilized with parking your street on the truck like, I mean, parking your truck on the street like everyone else and then put a sidewalk up to that building if you need to get up to that building? But why do you want to park in your backyard? I'm trying to figure out.
I guess the question is, why now? Why, why do you want a driveway to just pull a truck up into your backyard? Why now?
I think it's.
I, 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 I don't, I see, I've got an old car. I got a nineteen twenty-nine Model A and, and I would like to, I bring it in and I would like the, the area to look nice by putting another driveway instead of, you know, going through the, through the grass and, and that, that makes the, the area not, not too neat though, if, if I was, if were to do that.
So what is, what is the Model A stored?
What's that?
The Model A car, what is it stored? In the, in the regular garage?
No, no, it's not there. It's, it's at, it's at another house. And, no, it's not there now.
When I drove by, there was a car parked in the grass. So I'm assuming whichever car that was, it's just another parking spot there, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, another parking spot, yeah. To keep your cars away from the street, I'd rather park them on a, on a driveway.
Well, when I drove by, my concern was, and is, if we grant this variance, he's going to be parking a car behind his house, but he's also going to have the ability to park a car basically in the middle of his lawn. Because if we put a driveway all the way through, and like you said, I went by too, and there was a car parked pretty much in the grass, not on the slab where the white truck is in the picture that Dan showed us. Plus, there were cars parked on the street. I don't know that we're going to be alleviating a whole lot because they're already using it as a parking spot. So as far as alleviating on-street parking, I, I don't see that being an issue because they're already parking back there and they're just driving over the curb to do it. If I were a neighbor, I would not want to see cars parked basically along the whole side of their house, which is, I mean, with a, with a fifty-foot space between the two drives, it's not a whole lot of grass on the side of the house there. I agree.
I could see if you wanted to use that area to do your car restoration, bring the car to the slab, close the gated fence behind it and work on it. Then, if that's what you want to use it for. But if you're using it just for a regular driveway every day, every day, then I, I don't, I can't see that.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to use a driveway to, I mean, every day to go in and out. I, it's, it's, it's not going to be like a, a daily in and out. It's just that I would like to have a parking space in the backyard for an extra automobile or.
Don't mind me asking this, Mr. Solis, but you have a driveway now, you have a carport. How many cars exactly at that house?
Right now, I've got four, but I'm going to get rid of one and one, one belongs to my son and the other one I'm going to give to my granddaughter. She'll be eighteen next, next month. So there's going to be either three or, or four, no more than three or four. I like to have three.
Any more questions for Mr. Solis? Okay, thank you, Mr. Solis.
Sure.
Any commissioners you want to, any thoughts between ourselves? I have a comment here. I, I'm, I, I think the last time this came up, we were given direction, or at least Jared, Jared indicated that city council wanted some direction on this. Subsequently, they've revised the ordinance to accommodate second driveways. So my thought is, we should probably stick to the soon-to-be revised ordinance. And based on that, this would not meet those guidelines. Any comments, anything further?
I think the, another loophole in the ordinance change to not take into account corner lots that have a hundred and twenty-five foot of frontage on one side, that's actually off a street. Because I think we'll, potentially, we can see more of these where it's the side of the house, and you're right, maybe the front of the house isn't a hundred and twenty feet, but the depth is. And I, I agree with you, Mr. Hayek. Even with the new revision, this, this still wouldn't fall within the, the new guidelines.
Would you entertain a motion?
Yes, sir. All right. Do I have a motion for approval or denial or what?
I would like to make a motion that the variance be disapproved.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, which would mean approving, so we're, we're essentially voting to disapprove the variance request. All, so aye. We, it's unanimous. Okay, no nay, so. The variance request is an aye.
All right, moving on. Good evening. We already talked about this, this first revision a little bit tonight. But as Mr. Hayek mentioned, council's given direction. They'd like to see some more flexibility with the driveway ordinance as far as the number, the maximum number of driveways allowed. So this revision would do just that. It would allow up to two driveways for large residential lots with frontage of a hundred and twenty-five feet or more. That hundred and twenty-five foot measurement, the reason we use that is that's consistent, that's the, the same lot frontage measurement that is consistent with our rural residential lots, those large, larger half-acre acre lots. We require them to be, have a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. And in their staff report, there, I, you know, this all, this all came up because of driveway variances in the Northcrest area. There, of course, there are multiple subdivisions out there that actually make up what we, we all commonly refer to as the Northcrest area. But on the staff report, you can see those kind of average lot widths in Northcrest Estates, Catherine Heights and Highland Estates, with those average lot sizes being a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty-three feet wide. This revision would amend section twenty dash eighty-two A, where it currently, this is the, where residential driveways are regulated and permitted, where it currently states that one driveway per lot for each local street on which they front. We would then add a second sentence that says interior lots, which is not a corner lot, with frontage of a hundred and twenty-five feet or more on a local street, would be permitted to have two driveways, as long as there's a minimum of forty feet of spacing between the, those two driveway radius. And everything else would remain the same. Yeah, so that's, on a corner lot, you know, this, this.
If Mr. Solis's front door had been on the other street, he would have had a, it's the same discussion. He had a hundred and twenty-two feet worth of frontage. It would have been a little different situation than, than with, with this new change.
Yeah, and I don't have the rest of the, I don't have the rest of the driveway ordinance in front of me. The, you know, corner lots are already allowed two driveways, one on each local street in which they front. So the driveway ordinance currently doesn't write, doesn't, doesn't allow, nor would this revision allow, someone on a corner lot to have two driveways on the same street frontage.
Does, in your opinion, does the ordinance have to say frontage? Can it not just stipulate a hundred and twenty-five feet of street access?
Then we get into that corner lot business, right?
Well, but why is that a bad thing? Other than a corner lot, I guess, could have three.
And you could have a corner lot having three to four driveways. And there, there are other sections in this code. They're allowed to have a horseshoe driveway or the circle, commonly called the circle driveway. They're allowed to have those if they've got sixty-five feet of frontage. Of course, that means that they're connected, but.
I'm just trying to think if there's any other neighborhoods where the hundred and twenty-five might be on the side road rather than on the front road. It's not a huge number of lots that we're talking about. I'm just asking the question.
Right. And, and this ordinance really is, this ordinance revision is really addressing a, a small amount of lots in, in town. I don't, I don't know that they're necessarily all, they're not all, a majority of them are concentrated up there in that Northcrest area, but there's some off on, in Lone Tree Acres, off of Lone Tree Road, Taurus Elementary in that area. There's some larger lots in that area that might, might meet this requirement, but. And this, so this keeps it narrowly focused where it's just those, those really large lots. Any, any more, we can take questions at any time. I don't know if you want me to go on to the next one.
No, I, I'm assuming there, we vote as a package, both items?
Sure, sure.
Jared, before you go on, let me ask you a question. If someone were to own multiple lots at that point.
Like a house on two lots or something like that?
Three lots.
Or three lots.
I've, I've known some people buy two lots, one for the home, one for the pool or what have you.
And cumulatively, they would have more than.
But each lot stands its own address at that point. Would that, you'd be, we'd be looking at a variance at that point?
Well.
If someone were to buy multiple lots to have a larger estate, if you will.
Then we could, we could look at that, we could look at that as one large lot and if they've got a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage with those three lots, they, you know, they'd probably meet that hundred and twenty-five feet really easily if they've got three lots together.
Or Bruce, are you saying that they could build a driveway in each lot? So in, in the estates, technically, you could have three driveways.
Each lot could have one, yeah. I mean, you see that in some cases as well. So, I mean, they wouldn't, would they, we need to address that at this time or would that just be addressed as a one-time, two-time basis, do you think it should come up?
I think we address that on a one-time, you know, as they come up.
Just have people not park in their yards? Really?
That would be an enforcement challenge.
They do it in Nashville, Tennessee.
They do it in a lot of communities. I, honestly, I think that came up in some council discussions with some of these last variances about that. And I, there were several heads that nodded no to regulating parking on the grass, so, for residences, so. Any more questions on the driveway or, I want to cut discussion off. This next ordinance revision is an, is a, is a minor one that's come up for rural residential setbacks. Our current ordinance requires a fifty-foot front yard setback. That's been in effect at least since the nineteen ninety-two, ordinance revision in nineteen ninety-two, since everybody here is, none of us were on planning commission at that time. There was a huge rewrite of the subdivision and development ordinance at that time, and so there were a lot of requirements that were added to the ordinance during that revision. And I believe it was at, at that time that the fifty-foot setback was established for, for rural residential lots. And staff is really unaware of, of why there's, what the reasoning was or what the need is for having such a large front yard setback. You're eliminating a lot of usable property there. Of course, subdivision, these rural residential subdivisions can establish de-restrictions and whatnot and still regulate if they want a larger setback, like fifty feet or a hundred feet or something, but. So it came to staff's attention recently and, and just thought I'd take the opportunity while we're bringing this driveway ordinance revision to you to, to propose to reduce that down to thirty-five foot so that it provides a little more buildable area on some of these rural residential lots.
But does that help with reducing the cost of the driveway?
It could, absolutely would, could reduce the cost of the driveway. Gives them, you know, more buildable area. You could have a, I guess you could have some lots that may be one acre, but maybe part of it's in the floodplain or, you know, any number of. number of issues. Basically, let him just move closer to the street, and it certainly would have the effect of reducing, being able to reduce the driveway by 15 feet. Still accommodates any kind of off-street parking and all of that, so.
Any comments, questions? Any citizens communication on this, on these items? None? Okay, do, so I guess we just, a yea or nay vote, yeah, we just, okay. Okay, do I have a-
I have, I make a motion to approve the changes as presented by Jared.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the changes by Mr. Rashid, and a second by Mr. Woods. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passed unanimously.
The, the last item for tonight is the development report. Because we didn't have a meeting last month, I combined all the, the plat and site plan activity for, for April and May. So we had nine minor plats come in. The four major plats that we, we discussed this evening, and then we had seven site plans. Just to highlight a few here, there's a, a proposed McDonald's at Laurent, just, just north of US 59, there's actually a McDonald's there that's kind of in the stripes. They're going to move out of there and build a new store. There's kind of a vacant little pad site that's between the two driveways there, and they're going to build right, right in that area. The fire station, the, the city fire station on Ball Airport Road, that was, that came in last month. And the Loubeys Fuddruckers, which I actually, I believe, was approved today, that is in front of the Home Depot, one of the, there's a couple pad lots out there, they're going to occupy one of those. It's actually, it's a, the Loubeys and Fuddruckers is a combination, they're going to be in one building, one just kind of sharing. We had two items that went to the city council. One was the, the variance for the Tuscany, which was a, an encroachment on the rear yard that was approved. And there was also a driveway variance for the 203 Simpson Road, which was also approved by council. The next page, I have the April and also the, the May building numbers. April, we had 16 single-family houses. Let's see here, four new commercial projects. I guess one of our apartments was also approved in April for a total value of just over 25 million for the month. Total fees for the month were 78,000. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about this. May, May was a really good month. We had 19 houses, so we're just kind of seeing a trend, hopefully that continues with single-family. And we had a, a lot of the, the value for this particular month was a lot of apartments that you see that are kind of under construction now. We had a total value of 40, just under 46 million for the, for the month of May, which is, which is pretty big. And our, our total so far through eight months is at 132 million, which is, which is actually more than we did last year at this, for 12 months, so we're, things are moving, moving along very well. And then total fees collected last, for May was just under 100,000. Happy to answer questions about this table.
Thank you, Dan. Is there, okay, any other business commission wants to discuss?
Do you want to introduce your new person?
Sure. We have a new planner on staff, Jaren, Lord, now I'm not going to remember how to say it, Hogenson?
Hogenson.
Hogenson. I'll get it. We're already getting mixed up in the, in the office with Jared and Jaren and all that, but Jaren's a recent graduate of the Texas A&amp;M Masters of Urban Planning Program and started with us about three weeks, three weeks ago? Has it been a month?
It started May 19th.
May 19th, so, okay, it's been a month. Time flies when you're having fun.
It's his one-month anniversary.
Yeah. So he'll be quickly stepping up and doing a lot of the planning commission reports. We have other news. This is Dan's last planning commission meeting. He's accepted a position with the city of Saski, which is up in the northeast quadrant of the Dallas metroplex area, and so he'll be going up there to Saski. Am I saying it right?
Saksie.
Okay. Anyway, up there.
I'd like to thank you for pronouncing things. Congratulations, Dan.
Congrats.
So he'll be taking, taking on a direct, director role there, so very excited for him.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone. I had an excellent experience here, it's been great working with the city and, and the planning commission, and I'm going to miss it here. We, you know, we did a lot of great things and projects, and, you know, things are really kind of on the upward trend here, which is, which is great, as, as these numbers show clearly, so. Sad to go, but it is, it's a great opportunity for myself and my family, so, thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck, Dan.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else?
And welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome. If nothing else, then I guess we can adjourn.
Some move?
Okay.
Some move.
Aye.